Hello, everyone. Welcome to the October 27th Library Board Meeting. Can we have a call of the role? President.
Dr. Patata.
Present.
Dr. Plasio.
Present.
Dr. Payne.
Present.
Dr. Rialo.
Present.
And Ms. Whitaker.
Present.
Would you have a form?
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes a quorum. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Board, it's my pleasure to welcome you to the Indianapolis Public Library's October 2025 Board of Trustees Meeting. My name is Ray Beederman, and I serve as your president for our Board of Trustees. Thank you for joining us. A special thank you to our Spades Park Branch staff, who are our hosts tonight. Spades Park is one of the most historic facilities here in our system, one of two original Carnegie libraries, and it's at the heart of the Spades Park neighborhood. We'll hear more about this library and its community from their branch manager in a moment. First, I have a few individuals to acknowledge tonight. First on the list here is our Board Secretary, Dr. Patricia Payne. Yep, sorry. She was recognized in September with the Lifetime Achievement Award from the Indiana Association of Public Schools Superintendents and Administrators of Color. Congratulations, Dr. Payne. Yeah, we appreciate the important work you do with race, equity, and inclusion on a national level, and all you do with promoting education and literacy locally. Thank you very much.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I would also, thank you very much for that, but I also want to let you know that on Saturday, Board Member Dr. Colimer Todd was honored by the, by Delta Kappa Association with the Education Award, so.
Well, you stole some of my notes for next month's meeting, but that's okay. Next, I also want to acknowledge Kim Uers, our Access Belonging and Culture Officer, who couldn't be with us tonight, but for her recent editorial on the Freedom to Read that was featured in the October 1st edition of the Indianapolis Recorder. Ms. Uers reminds us that reading connects us to diverse ideas, fostering empathy and understanding across communities. Ms. Uers wrote, "We invite our community to stand with us, to share stories that matter, and to affirm the right of every person to read and think freely. Because access to knowledge is more than power, it is justice, and it is freedom." Thank you, Ms. Uers, and all the library workers for championing the values of the Indianapolis Public Library. On that note, I will invite Ms. Rennie Candidate, Spades Park Branch Manager, to the microphone to share a branch report.
Okay. Hello, welcome to Spades Park Branch. I'm Rennie Candidate, and I just started here in March this year, new to Indianapolis even, so definitely learning my way around, but loving being here so far. So, I'm going to give you some information about Spades Park Branch. We'll get this started. So, this is the information about who we are. We have two full-time librarians. That includes myself and our children's youth specialist. We have one circulation, one supervisor. Consuelo's been with the library for a long time. She's very knowledgeable and really just a great person to work with. We have two computer lab assistants. They both work 20 hours a week, providing our careers, resources, resume help, that kind of thing. We also have one library assistant, who also works 20 hours, and we have two hourly pages that do all of our shelving and just kind of random tasks that we have. Tony has been here for a long time, and all of the kids at Storytime love taking the elevator up with Mr. Tony, so. They're definitely a part of our staff, even if they're only here for a couple hours a week. And we do have three active volunteers that come and do various work, teaching classes, and then we have a volunteer that shelves DVDs for us on Friday after, or Friday mornings, so. Okay, this is who we serve. So, we have a total population in our area that we serve of 10,500 people. We have a really interesting variety of ages. So, you can see the 0 to 19 is about 20, oh gosh, 28%. And then 20 to 64 is 65% of our population. So, we have a lot of families and young children that come here. The unemployment rate here is about 5%, and we do have a growing Spanish-speaking population in this neighborhood and community, so that's something that we're looking into, which you'll see that in another slide. There are 12% of the people in our pop, in our service area that do not have access to internet, so we do have a lot of computer users here at this building. There's also 21% of people without a high school diploma, which is interesting, and I think that we could definitely do some work with maybe providing courses or, you know, more books possibly for, you know, getting people into getting a GED or doing the high setting exam. There is a, 37% of the people have a bachelor's degree or higher, so, you know, that's definitely changed from the last time that the statistics were run. I've got these two pictures here. That's Jensen showing off his Summer Reading Program prize dinosaur. He's a regular at our Storytime. He actually came over because Ms. Gibson, our children's librarian, came over here from Lawrence Branch, and they started coming to our Storytimes because they just, he just loves Ms. Gibson, so. And then down in the corner there, we've got Moose the Dog from Silly Safari's Animal Meet and Greet, and a little baby that is petting a gigantic dog that did not move from that spot the entire time he was here. So, that was definitely a fun program. I got to touch an owl, and that was, that was cool. All right, so here's some information about how we serve. So, we have 12,938 active cardholders, and so that's pretty awesome. So, people that are not in our service area definitely coming to this building. So far, in 2025, we hosted 173 programs with 4,844 individuals coming. So, that's pretty intense. That's 15% increase over quarter three of 2024. So, definitely have a growing program, robust kind of programs that we're doing. We're offering some more adult programs in the arts and crafts kind of situation. So, that's also great. Through September, we had circulated 48,915 items, which is a 2% increase over circulation last year. Also, our door count is at 26,000 through September, so that's, you know, people coming in and out of the building, use the computers, you know, do, do whatever they're doing. They come in and out, so that's a tremendous amount of people. We also have our seed library, which is in our old card catalog, which everybody just loves that that's where it's at. So, we're hopefully keeping that around for much longer. It's very popular. We have people come in every day through the summer to get seeds. We also had about 50 packets of donated seeds this year, so that's really great, too. The community is giving back to what they're taking from. So, we've also have, we have our hotspot program. We also have bunny bags, which are the bags that have books for children, and they just check out the whole bag. Those have been super popular in the last couple of months, so we're going to look at tennis, switching out some of the books that we have a little stash and get some different ones in there. And we also have two birding kits, which has been pretty popular as well recently, which is interesting. Most people, I guess it hadn't circulated in a long time, and we made a sign at the beginning of the summer that said we had birding kits, and they've checked out a couple times. So, that would be something that we would look into, maybe trying to partner with the Parks Department across the street. And then here's some around the branch information. So, our goals for next year and in the coming months, we would like to add a Spanish language collection. We've been getting books on hold for a couple different patrons that are in Spanish, so I think that that would be a really important thing that we could probably do. We are trying to increase the outreach opportunities, especially with our neighborhood schools. So, we do have the Theodore Potter Spanish Immersion School in our service area. That's something that we're wanting to try and communicate more with them and try to get them to be a little bit more active with us and our Spanish-speaking neighbors. There are other schools we do visit. We go to some of their after-school program things, you know, their class, after-class night, like welcome night and stuff at the beginning of the year. So, you know, we try to do our best. Sometimes it's hard to get that communication back from some of the teachers and librarians, but we are working on, we're working on a plan. Hopefully, it'll work out. So, we are wanting to increase our program offerings with computer classes, career centers, and then, like I said, art programs additionally. I actually have taught a lot of DIY classes in my previous librarian life. So, we did a paint-along for the Feast of Lanterns, which is the big festival that shuts this branch down for the day. And I'm going to be teaching paper quilling in a couple of weeks, so that'll be really fun. I don't know if I'm that great at it, but I have the stuff. I have the stuff that people can try it, which I think is the important part. You know, you see these things, and you're like, I always want to try that, but I don't know if I have the means to learn or purchase the materials to do it, and so we're going to do it here. So, that'll be really fun. I'm excited, and we've had a good couple followings of people coming to those sessions. We want to continue increasing our summer reading participation, which was absolutely bonkers this year. The adults' completion rate here was really an incredible increase over what we had had previously. So, you know, we, our staff worked with, you know, at the point of service saying, "Do you want to sign up for summer reading? It's easy. You just take this paper," you know, and really kind of pushing the word of mouth to try and get people to be more active in that. We're also hoping to add one more additional adult book discussion program. That would be maybe starting in January. We're not quite sure if that's going to be a silent book club, which is like a new thing, where everybody just hangs out and reads quietly, and then kind of discuss what you've been reading, or if we want to do a staff-led discussion. We're still trying to figure that one out, but we have some time. And then also, we have our artwork that is being updated. So, up in the top right corner, that is the current painting that we have hanging over the fireplace downstairs. And we have worked with Jared Stone, who has provided other artwork for the library, as well as a couple of the high schools. He was an artist in residence, I believe, at Lawrence High School. So, the bottom painting or bottom picture is kind of just a mock-up of the idea that he is going to do. So, we have the building, the lanterns for the Feast of Lanterns, which is a neighborhood festival staple. And then, of course, we have some of our awesome library kids that we have come in just about every day. And they're very, their parents are library users, they're power users, so they're really supportive of the library. And then, of course, we have Ms. Anne, who we are honoring with being in this painting. Last Friday, we had a plaque installed in honor of her memory and service to the Spades Park Library. And I think that, oh, questions?
Any questions from the Board?
Just a couple of questions. Thank you so much. This presentation was wonderful. Welcome aboard, starting in March.
Yeah, yeah.
Just welcome. You said, you pointed out 65% for 20 to 20, 20 to 64-year-olds, and then you said 21% without a high school diploma.
Yeah.
What are some of the ideas you're thinking about? You mentioned GED classes. What are some other things that you're thinking about in terms of equity of opportunity for those who are without a high school diploma?
Sure. That, and it's really, that's a really hard question to tackle, because you have to get the person to buy into the classes and wanting to do it. I was actually on a board for a literacy board at one of my previous jobs, and we were kind of the fundraising arm, so we would raise all the money to provide the scholarships for people to actually take the test. We worked with a four-year university that was in one of the counties that we served, and they actually provided all the classwork, and they had satellite locations at different, in different counties and areas around. This was in kind of rural Missouri, and then we would pay for those students to take the test, because even that is a barrier for a lot of these people to, you know, go do, you know, get their goal achieved. You know, they can't afford to, to even pay for the test, which can be over $100. And they provided all, like I said, all the free coursework. They also had all of the books that they would be using in those classes on the library shelves, so students could come in, work on their own, check out a laptop, join a wireless version of the class that they would be taking. So, I think there's a lot of opportunity to try and provide more materials and information even. Right now, we have to send people to the Bonner Center and to Indy Reads, and, I mean, and that's great. I think there could be more of a partnership possibly with that.
We're going to hear some more about it later on today as well.
Oh, great.
I think one of the, one of the greatest things that the library can contribute is that equity of opportunity. I don't know what a birding kit is. I don't know how many other folks are aboard. What's a birding kit?
Well, they come in a bag, and it has two, like, I think, a Wild Birds of Indianapolis, like pamphlet, and some information, so you can kind of identify them. And then there's this weird little whistle that you, like, twist. I don't know how it works, because it's like a little wooden thing, and you twist the top, and it makes a little tweet-tweet sound, so it's pretty fun. We actually had someone check it out, and then she was like, I need to renew this, because I'm having so much fun. And so, she renewed it again, and then she just brought it back. But, yeah, it seems like it could be a really cool, I don't know, something fun. We can maybe work it into summer reading, you know. Check out a birding kit. Yeah.
Thank you so very much for your leadership. Much appreciated.
Thanks.
Thank you. Other questions from the Board?
Yes. Ms. Candidate, did I pronounce your name correctly?
It's Candidate.
You mentioned Theodore Potter School 74. I'm going to take that on as a personal challenge, because Arturo Rodriguez, who is, he just became principal of that school. And so, I will make sure that you all are hooked up, okay?
We do have, and obviously, like, when we send out, you know, emails to the schools, it goes to the librarians probably, so, you know, it might just, they're so busy, there's only one of them and a ton of students, you know. We do have a really good relationship with two of the charter schools, and we actually have artwork. They dropped a bunch of artwork off from the kids, and it's on display in the children's area. So, if you go in that main door, look over to the right, and it's all up on the walls and stuff, so. They were very excited to have that. We also have a huge painting that another school did. It's up on, actually, I'm not sure if that's still there. I didn't look. But it has, you know, Cheeto the Neighborhood Cat and, you know, other fun things in it, so.
I'm going to work on Theodore Potter 74.
That sounds good. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Plasio.
I have similar questions, but I'm going to turn it to IPS 14 or Washington Irving. How's your relationship with them? How's that working?
In the Washington Irving schools, is that what you said?
Yes.
I'm not sure. I can't remember all of the schools, and I know they just did a little reshuffling with which schools go to where. So, it kind of depends. We don't, we tend to get a lot of, like, middle school students here, and East Washington Branch seems to get a lot of the teen kind of participation and, like, older middle school students. But we can definitely, you know, do, I'll look into see which, which service area that one falls into, and we'll see if we can make a difference.
Because IPS 15, Thomas Gregg, the library, the person who was put there was a teacher to do the shared library, but she's overwhelmed with so much going on, and that's a sister school.
Okay.
So, that's why I was asking, because I saw 14 here. But you're right, they're super stretched over there with
I think that's
a lot of duties.
True in a lot of schools for libraries. I mean, we can do, we'll do whatever we can. I mean, we have, you know, we get a ton of school books returned here that we send back, you know, through the shared system, but we'll, we will hit the ground, maybe after the Thanksgiving break, and see if we can't, like, get some connections made over the holiday break, and then try and start something up in the spring with them, partnerships.
And on the partnerships, I know we're going to talk about that, but you mentioned Bonner Center. Are you having those people and other centers or providers come here and do events or do? Because I'm wondering, out of the 20%, 20.5%, how many have that kind of buy-in or would like to do it, but?
You know, the Bonner Center has their own computer labs and things like that, so a lot of people can go there and pretty much do all of the things that they could do here, except for, you know, of course, we're the bubbly, happy staff, and we're going to welcome you and help you and guide you, maybe a little bit more one-on-one than is possible. We have, we do go to one of the apartment complexes that the Bonner Center hosts, the first and third Wednesdays of the month with books, DVDs. We just brought some magazines, and so we're really going to try and push, maybe bring in some passive programming or bring in just a small program that we could do, show them, you know, online reading and things like that, to see. That's going to be starting up. We're actually, just after the summer, getting restarted going back there, so that's just happening.
I think you bring a good point, and I'll, I'll be short. Yes. Just, I think if we maybe tackle the buy-in
Yeah.
challenge, maybe not try to cover everything, but just build that community in collaboration. Maybe that's a good first step.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Awesome. Any other questions from the Board? Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Okay, so, let's see. Next, we have a report on partnerships with the library. Mr. John Helling, Chief Public Services Officer, and Sakura Fuqua, Immigrant Outreach Program Specialist, will give this report. While they're stepping forward, I want to note that Ms. Fuqua recently received an honor by the International Center. Ms. Fuqua was a finalist for the Global Impression Award, which honors emerging leaders who directly impact the global community with Indiana. Congratulations. Take it away.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Okay, so Sakura and I are here to talk about partnerships. Last month at the Board meeting, the Board asked for a bit of an overview, so I've got some high-level stuff to tell you. Sakura's got some detail to go into about one specific kind of case study example, and then, of course, we're happy to answer any questions at all. So, first things first, like I said, it's starting from the overview perspective. What is a partnership at NDPL? Well, we use that word for all kinds of stuff, ranging in word, ranging from stuff that's very small to very big. You know, we have partners who we might exchange a couple emails with, and they might set up a table every once in a while. We also have partnerships, you know, like the shared system, for example, at IPS that are, you know, huge in scale, governed by contracts and things like that. For the purposes of tonight, we're going to be talking about stuff that's on that larger end, on that more formal end. And of course, I would be remiss if I didn't talk about policy in my presentation to the Library Board. So, we do have a policy that governs community partnerships. It's right there on your screen, number 522. It calls for us to proactively partner with community organizations, and, and we do. Partnerships are a huge part of what we do. We truly couldn't achieve our mission without the help of our partners, so we'll talk about, we'll talk about how we do that. So, how are partnerships formed? Well, it, it sounds kind of simple. It's really two ways. Sometimes we approach them, and sometimes they approach us. Usually, when we're approaching a partner, it's because we've got a strategic goal in mind, but we've identified a gap in our skill, a gap in our experience, a gap in our language abilities, a gap in our resources, something like that, and we'd like a partner to help us fill that gap. Usually, the partner's got some kind of similar goal, and we can find out a way to make a mutually beneficial arrangement. Often, when a partner approaches us, they're looking for the same thing. We might have a resource that they don't have. But also, my experience has been that we are viewed around, around the city as a trusted community organization. We have a huge reach with 25 locations across the city with deep community ties, like, like Rennie was just describing it here at Spades Park. So, we're often able to get, to kind of maybe amplify the reach of our partner organizations. We can, we can get people through the door, and we can get people aware of their services as well. And then the photo there, that's Dia del Nino. That's a partnership that we had with WFYI, so that's an example of what I'm talking about. That's a partnership. It's a huge day-long festival of literacy and childhood education. We work with WFYI over the course of the year. They have ideas. We have ideas. We bring them together. We see what works and what fits, and it's truly, you know, a collaborative effort. So, that's one brief example. I'm going to turn it over to Sakura, and she's going to talk in depth about another example.
Okay, this evening, we'll highlight our partnership with the Community Alliance of the Far East Side, known as CAFE. We work with their Immigrant Affairs Department. The department, the partnership started through a CAFE member who attended a cultural Haitian event last year. Through the conversation, they invited NDPL to get to know each other and the resources that we have and what they do in the community. Subsequent conversations led to the resume program, spearheaded by the tech team. This program wouldn't have been able to happen without their expertise. This program falls under the strategic goal of digital resiliency, because this program provided access to laptops to create resumes, template to start the resumes, and participants were taught how to save their work on flash drives so that they could go back later and update their resumes on their own. For this year, we decided to offer three programs in September, October, and November. The goal was six participants per program, because we're just starting out. Originally, we decided to offer this program in a different language each month, so Spanish, Haitian Creole, and French. However, the demand came from the Haitian population, so this time around, all of those programs are in Haitian Creole. Today, we've had 11 participants and plan to serve 17 to 18 by November. This is the first time, as I mentioned, that we offered this for non-English speakers, so we utilized the resources and expertise from both organizations. This partnership has been meaningful, because we are able to complement each other and support each other in our stronger areas. For example, CAFE offers understanding of community needs, because they specifically work in that catchment area day-to-day. They have an established client base that they help to provide resources and promote the program. The staff reflects and speaks the language of the community, aiding the light, the library with interpreting during the program, but also to explain and get participants registered. So, earlier, you were talking about buy-in, to get that buy-in within the community. They also help us translate and edit materials for the program. But during that time, they have given us a stage to be able to provide, to talk about the library, so outreach opportunities. During the program, particip- During the program, participants are looking through the program guide, so we offer them the program guide. And this facilitate, facilitates questions and discussions so that the participa, sorry, so that they can learn about what we do and how we can address our needs and interests. I think some of the notable reactions during this time period when we're talking that I gathered are that they're asking for more computer classes from the tech team. So they're doing a great job connecting with the community, but also Haitian Creole books to share with their children. They're very impressed that we have something like this at the library. We have also been invited to speak at a couple of their monthly meetings this year, which include other east side organizations to discuss library programs and resources which help us reach a wider audience. NDPL offers, of course, the tech team creates the content and instructs the program. Originally, this was designed for English speakers, but the tech team spent time with CAFE to modify the contents to accommodate interpreting, which adds extra time to a program. The materials were also modified to take into account literacy levels, so more visuals, but then also taking into consideration previous experience or background knowledge of resumes in general. The tech team also, well, as I mentioned, instructs the program, but they also taught myself and CAFE how to use technology to communicate with speakers of other languages to enhance learning. So that was, that was an exciting moment for all of us. But at the beginning, I, they all, I mentioned that they also offer the laptops and flash drives. And of course, participants at the end of the program get to walk away with a resume. Lastly, immigrant outreach serves as a liaison between the two organizations, provides feedback for materials as they are developing them, and support during the program when, when it's needed. The impacts on the community of this program are increased job opportunities and computer skills for the participants, increased awareness of CAFE and NDPL resources, and potential future collaborations to serve more community members. The main goal of this program is to serve the people who come. But I'm impressed and proud about what we learned through working with one another. I believe both organizations will be able to take the lessons, learn and apply it to our work beyond this program. In sum, we learned how to better serve other languages. We learned tech tips that we can apply to our daily lives, working with the immigrant community. And we also gained a deeper understanding of community needs and interests, and have identified potential ideas and future collaborations. Sorry, I got a mouthful. I'm sorry.
That's, that's a great example of an extremely robust partnership, as you can tell. A lot of activities flowing in both directions. So keep that in mind when we talk about this next slide, which is some partnership statistics. So that was all, all that Sakura told you was, was a description of one partnership. Now we're gonna talk about how that looks, you know, kind of scaled up across the system. So first of all, I want to give thanks to Mackenzie for providing me with these, with these wonderful statistics. She's got, she's got an answer for every question in my experience. So of the 256 community action plans that we've created so far this year at NDPL, 232 of them, or 91%, call for a proposed partner. And I say proposed because, you know, obviously, sometimes we write out these ideas, and we propose them, and they, they don't happen for various reasons. But 91% of our community action plans call for one, which I think shows you the importance that our staff place on, on these partnerships and that we place as an organization, and the value that they bring to our, to our activities. Moving across there, so that's, that was partners in our programs. We're obviously partner, partnering in other folks' programs as well. So we've attended 174 community events to date in 2025. We've been hosted at 97 partners so far in 2025. And we have 364 partnerships listed in our contacts database. So every time someone goes out and visits one of our partners or goes to promote the library at one of our partner locations, we, we track it, we log it in a database, number one, so that we can keep count of how often we're doing this. Also, so that we don't duplicate efforts to the extent that we can avoid it. So if you wanna see who our partnership is with the International Center, for example, you can go in the database and see who's logged activity with them, so you can reach out to them and leverage that relationship, save you a couple steps and those kinds of things. And then off-site NDPL programs involving partners. We've had 1,465 off-site programs to date in 2025 at 170 partner locations, which means that 20% of our programs have been presented off-site in 2025, which we couldn't do without the help of our, of our partners hosting us. And then lastly, at the bottom there, that text is a little hard to read, but these are how, how our partners have played a role in each of these activities. So you can see 43 of them have presented or helped present the program. About half that number have either helped promote or consulted during the planning and research phase of our program, kind of told us what, what they would like to see us do differently or adjust in our, in our programs as we're planning them. And then 11 of them, they're the partners' clients or members were active program participants. And then one of them has provided material. So that's a statistical overview of our partnerships. I will also say Mackenzie is developing a partnership feedback survey that we're gonna be launching next year so that our partners can, well, can, they can give us feedback about what works, what doesn't work, what they wanna see, what, what they wanna change, those kind of things, and make sure that we're fulfilling their needs as much as we're fulfilling ours. So that was a lot of information in a short period of time, so we are happy to answer your questions at this point.
Thanks. Some very exciting programming and partnerships. I have a question, kind of specific to that CAFE program, but actually looking at it more broadly. So did you look at any data? How many job offers did the people receive? Did you look at skills on their computer ability? And I'm thinking of, if you think of how you might be able to collect those data, it could turn into grants and further funding.
So we didn't look at that specifically. How we started was through CAFE. They, some of them were, I guess, similar to case managers, so they were well aware of some of the backgrounds of the people who attended. So they do have that information. And I think you're right, and I think that's a great idea, and I think it's there, we, we might just need to ask for it. Mm-hmm, yep.
Yeah, because there, there's some real grant money in these kinds of programs.
Some very powerful narratives, for sure.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we will proceed to public comment. Do we have a public comment today?
Yes, we do.
Okay, I will read my little blurb here. "We welcome feedback from the public about the Indianapolis libraries, and this is a time when the public may address the library board. If there are several people representing the same group, please select a spokesperson. Please do not repeat the same comments someone else has offered. Please also note, this public comment time is not the appropriate forum for commenting on matters related to employee charges, employee complaints, or alleged employee misconduct. Any such matters should be brought promptly to the attention of the CEO or the Human Resources Department, where matters can be properly addressed in compliance with established library policies and procedures. The five-minute limit will be allowed for each speaker. Each speaker should give their name and let us know if they're speaking on behalf of a group."
Who's the speakers tonight? The first one is Jesse Brown, and then after that will be Michael Torres.
All right. Welcome, counselor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for that presentation. It was really wonderful. I live, I guess technically probably closer to the Brightwood branch, but I find myself down here because it's actually in my district. So I put this down as my home branch, kind of fibbing, kind of not. I'm here for a few different reasons. Number one, just as the city county councilor, I was the only person who actually voted no on the library's budget this year, and I wanted to talk with the board about why, lest you think that I've lost my strong support for the libraries, which I assure you is not the case. As is often the case on the city county council, I end up being the canary in the coal mine who makes the noise first, while other counselors are a little bit more quiet about it. And there were several counselors who were very concerned about the way the budget was presented. Not so much any slight on CEO Hill or any of the staff, but just about the context that we find ourselves in. Whereas, I'm sure all of you are well aware, there's just not as much money coming from the state. Property taxes are being cut more different directions. Health and hospital corporation is, you know, raising their share of the local income tax. And so, you know, it, it seems like historically there has been a trend to push for, you know, we estimate coming in over budget, and then by the end of the year, luckily, it's all worked out, and, you know, we fixed that. And I think this is becoming a more and more dangerous time to have kind of flexible budgets like that for an organization like the library. And so I just wanted to raise the red flag that there were multiple counselors having these conversations about, well, gosh, if we need to cut from vital, you know, we're cutting to the bone at this point with city services and with what we can fund, maybe we should put more pressure on the library since the way that their budgeting is being done makes it seem like they have something to give. I don't think you have anything to give. And so, you know, I just wanted to kind of raise that red flag very loudly and clearly before next year's budget season. A couple other quick issues. Number one, and I did bring this up on the Municipal Corporations Committee hearing. You know, in previous years, or at least last year, there was a raise that was given to employees that was a flat raise, which helps increase the equity. I know this is a board that cares deeply about equity. This year, the presentation to the council didn't make it clear why that couldn't happen. And, you know, I heard from constituents, both library employees and elsewhere, you know, when Indi goes raising their rates by a dollar per ride, when AES is raising the electric bills, the percentage of low-wage workers' income that is just not in their control of how they spend is, is rising. And so people are feeling that even with a flat, you know, 3% raise, that's actually a pay cut compared to cost of living. You know, I just think that we have really great folks working at the library. So to the extent that you can, you know, push for more equitable policies, specifically around pay, I think that would be really well received, and I would greatly appreciate that. I had another point. Those were the two main ones. Well, yeah, just I, I worry in this financial environment that traditional funding mechanisms might not be enough. And so I encourage you to, you know, get creative in how we can find funding for the library. And I wanted to put myself at your service as well, and to yours as well, CEO Hill. You know, I think that our libraries deserve great funding. And I guess I'd heard some, you know, early rumblings that perhaps we were going to be increasing Sunday services, which I think is awesome, well-needed, and would do so much good in our community. And while we're struggling, you know, with finances, I just worry about setting a precedent that we're not gonna be able to meet in the future. So please, you know, let's, let's have every library open 24/7 if we can afford it, but let's make sure we can afford it because it just really is dire and dark from the state level and the federal level on down. So thank you for considering all of that. Yeah, I just really wanted to take a few minutes and explain my no vote. I remain a very strong supporter of the library, really want you all to succeed, want you, I think you deserve five times the funding that you have right now. I know state law doesn't allow for that anyway. But yeah, just wanted to explain myself and offer, you know, to have a conversation with anybody who has further questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Michael Torres?
Good evening, everyone. I feel like it's been a while since I came here to speak, so I'm here to speak about our negotiations and things that are going on with the library. I want to thank Councilman Jesse Brown for your continued attention to our library and to the workers who keep it running. We truly appreciate your openness to hearing feedback from our members. Like our trustees, you recognize without communication from frontline staff, decision-makers can intentionally legislate without a full understanding of day-to-day realities. We're fortunate that our trustees have also welcomed input and feedback from staff. As president, I take that responsibility seriously because I believe that sound decisions come only from having the full and honest story. President of our union, sorry. Councilman Brown rightly noted during the Municipal Corporations Committee budget presentation in September that your decision last year to award a flat rate increase was an important and positive step. It demonstrated an understanding that decades of across-the-board percentage raises had widened pay disparities among staff. By addressing that inequity, you showed employees and community members alike that NDPL is listening and committed to fairness. Here are a few comments from members on how that approach affected them differently compared to the traditional percentage-based increases. Last year, because of the flat rate increase, I was given a $1.74 hour raise compared to the previously proposed percentage raise, which would have been slightly more than 50 cents an hour. The library's flat rate raise helped to be able to catch up with the rising inflation cost. A spare $139 has helped assist me with paying more towards traditional monthly bills I cannot otherwise afford to consistently pay off in full, even with full-time work. Another member wrote, "Last year's flat raised increased bumped my pay up $2 an hour, resulting in an approximate $99 increase per bi-weekly pay period. At the time, I was juggling two part-time jobs and had only been a library employee for a few months. So the library's flat fixed raise helped me stay on top of monthly expenses, as well as increasing my confidence and trust in NDPL as an employer." Another one wrote, "Last year's fat, uh, flat fixed raise increased bumped my pay significantly as a part-time computer assistant. It gave me some breathing room when it came to bills and allowed me to make positive changes in my personal life that I would argue makes me a better employee. As things become harder and harder for some of the people we serve, us low-level employees have been working hard to keep the library a positive and walking place for all. I hope to see the return to flat fixed raise increases, not only because it is what the vast majority of people want, but because it demonstrates the library commitment to equity in practice. And my final response is, in the past years, when my yearly raise was 3%, I didn't notice much of a difference in my pay due to inflation. Receiving a dollar amount raised last year, I saw a much greater financial impact and was able to put my additional pay towards life's goals like buying a house. Having an administration whose goal is to champion equitable access but chooses to reinstate a percentage wage increase is very concerning to me. Our members remain deeply committed to providing excellent service to our patrons, our community, and our constituents. We entered this profession out of a genuine dedication to public service. Yet, as healthcare costs continue to rise and federal policies shift, many of our workers are facing new financial pressures that can quickly erode any modest gains in pay. That is why we urge NDPL not to be constrained by past norms when considering future salary adjustments. Instead, we ask that you continue to do what is best for all NDPL employees, ensuring that fair, thoughtful compensation supports our workforce and the vital public service we provide. Thank you."
And our last speaker is David Scott.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say good evening. My name is David Scott. I'm the president of Spades Park Neighborhood Association, and I welcome you to Spades Park. And I thank you for your service. The library has definitely been a stabilizing force in, especially in the poor neighborhoods. I'm celebrating over three and a half decades of service. I'm also a minister. So three and a half decades of service here on the Near East Side, and seen a lot of things come and go. And definitely appreciate you hiring Branch Manager Rennie, especially when you did. We're, we're still suffering through the loss of Ms. Anne Barnes and her faithful service all these years. And she's played a role. The, the Near East Side is the poorest, most racially diverse part of Indy. So Ms. Anne served as a mother figure to so many children and a stabilizing figure for so many fragile families. So with her, her passing, it left a hole in our hearts and in just the flow of interaction with, with a lot of families. And she's irreplaceable. So the timing of, of your hiring Branch Manager Rennie was perfect because she just came in and picked up and just carried on with the programs and created an environment where others could just mourn at their own pace and, and still continue with the programs. And so she's doing an excellent job as a, as president of the neighborhood association, and I'm in my fourth year. We're partnering with the library. We'll have our monthly meeting tomorrow in the same space. And it's just such an, such a blessing to have this kind of relationship with the library, to be able to receive what's going on in greater Indianapolis and then share with the neighborhood, and then share the programs from the library. and then share the programs from the library with those that we're interacting with. So I appreciate that and appreciate Councilman Brown's service, and we're thankful that he's in our district as well. So there's so much going on, and it's kind of like an ironic situation because trick-or-treat Halloween is Friday. The SNAP benefits are supposed to end for many areas on Saturday. So it's not a treat. It's really a trick on a lot of these families. And so there's some desperation right now. We're bracing for impact. We're bracing for impact because most of our families, even though we've had some changing demographics in the area, most of our families aren't really living from paycheck to paycheck. They're just hanging on by their fingernails. And to have food taken off of the regular routine and regular schedule is a major crisis. So we aren't sure what this is going to look like after Halloween. But we just want to encourage the library to keep doing what you're doing and to continue to send us good people. The thing we realize is this, that the library allows many of our neighbors to have access to the news and information, but they also have access to us and the agencies. So it gives them some options. And we're going to need every option we can find in the days ahead. So I implore you and encourage you that even though we're in a changing climate and there's a lot of things shifting, and my ancestral people have endured America's greatness before and miraculously survived. And whatever is coming down the pike here, I just encourage the library to hang on to your courage to continue celebrating diversity and hang on to your courage to continue to promote freedom of speech. Because as we move forward, the library quite possibly could be the last bastion of hope for those things to continue to move forward and be available for all citizens. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your service. And together, we can get through whatever is coming. But we definitely appreciate the role the library's played and hope that you continue to play that role for us.
Thank you. All right. Let's move on to approval of minutes for the regular meeting that was on September 22nd, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held September 22nd, 2025? Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a call of the roll.
Dr. Matata.
Present.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Present.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Ms. Witter.
Approved.
And Ms. Peterman.
Approved.
Mr. Peterman.
Approved. That's all right. All right, the motion's carried. Let's move on to the Finance Committee. Looks like Dr. Matata, are you the honorary chair?
And we're going to ask Lolita come forward, would you please? And is Mary with you today?
There she is.
There she is. Good evening, Board President Ray and trustees. I hope everybody's doing well. Mary, I are here to present the third quarter ending for 2025. Mary, our treasurer will review the expenditures and the revenue information and I will go over the resolutions.
For the revenue, as of September 30th, property tax is our largest source of revenue. We didn't receive any, which was expected because it's October-November item for distribution. And it is 52% of the budget what we've received already, so that's positive. Intergovernmental is the local option income tax and the distribution of county option income tax. And that's the regular amount was received for the month of $377,000. Charges for services, the largest part of that is public printing. At over half of that of the month, for $70,282. And miscellaneous, another large category, the largest part is interest revenue. Out of the 241, almost 242,000, $140,000 was interest. The largest being from the Huger Fund and the Trust Indiana Fund at over 4% each. So overall, year-to-date, we've received 57% of the budgeted revenue for the year-to-date, largely because we're waiting for more property tax revenue that's expected this month and next month. The revenue for the month in the graph shows the budget in gray and blue is this month. And the September, last year's month of September is in orange. So it is consistent that we do not receive property taxes this month. But the intergovernmental was received on par, a little bit higher than last year. Fines are a little bit, fines and fees, which primarily is not, we're still using the word fines, but it's primarily when books are lost that they get replaced. And that's a little bit more than last year. And charges for services, again, well, it's running a little bit less than last year. And miscellaneous is more, primarily from the interest. And year-to-date is presented in the bar chart on the right for revenue, with the year-to-date budget being in the gold bar. And blue is 2025 and orange was 2024 at this point. So much of it is the same as the prior year, very consistent. On the expenditure side, the largest expenditure type is for personal services and benefits. And that was at 67% of our budget year-to-date has been spent. And that drives everything. Total year-to-date, we've spent 63% of the budget as of the end of September. And so since that was nine months of the year, we're doing much better than budget. And then to show it graphically, for the month is on the left and year-to-date is on the right. The bar chart shows the budget for the month, that gray bar. And the blue bar is the month of September of 2025, and the orange is last year's budget. And this shows that the highest category is our personal services and benefits. And the next highest might be the other services and charges, which are primarily to maintain and clean the buildings. Then our year-to-date, to the right, the gold is the year-to-date budget. Blue is the September 2025 year-to-date, and orange is last year at this time, which again is showing that we're under budget, which we absolutely must be under budget at the end of the year, anyway.
This next is a new presentation.
This next slide is just typically just the revenue and expense shown a different way, where you can see the different pockets of the revenue, where you see the property taxes and the intergovernmental funds and charges for services and fines and fees and miscellaneous. So we're trying to give you a little different view of how, where our revenue is coming from and how we're allocating to the different expenses in those different pockets. As you can see, the personnel service is 67% of what the total expenses that we paid thus for. So this is just a different view of it. And that is it for our treasurer report.
Understanding better the revenue and expenses is really helpful for our larger audience as well. Much appreciated. You have the resolutions that you want us to move forward with?
Is that the report of the treasurer for September 2025 for filing for audit?
Move to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a call of the roll.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Ms. Witter.
Approved.
And Ms. Peterman.
Approved.
Thank you.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Thank you. Resolution 42-2025, I'd like to call up Deb Lambert.
Thank you, Mary.
Good evening. Board President and Board Members. I hope you're all doing well tonight. I am excited to bring to you a resolution to support us purchasing Brainfuse, an online tutoring and job assistance service. It supports our strategic plan objective L 5.5 under educator support, which calls for us to look into the feasibility of offering tutoring through community partnerships and other options, including online services. So it's right on target with our strategic plan. And Brainfuse was chosen for its ease of use, its job assistance module, its bilingual support, including Spanish-speaking tutors, and its broad range of subjects and the qualifications of the tutors. The service will run from 2:00 PM until midnight. And yes, we've double-checked that because the tutors reside all across the country. So the East Coast tutors support libraries on the West Coast late in the evening. And then the West Coast tutors, the other way around. The tutors on the West Coast would support our students later in the evening. And the service is $85,000 for an annual subscription. And we're asking you to support this so that we can move forward starting November 1st with the service.
This resolution, I was going to say this resolution did receive a due pass. I'm sorry. It's okay. This resolution did receive a due pass through the Finance Committee. Just one quick question. We heard earlier today that, not yet. Yes. Due pass from Finance Committee.
We will get to your question in just one moment. Absolutely. Okay, so Resolution 42-2025 regarding approval of Brainfuse online tutoring and lab assistance service contract received a positive recommendation from the Finance Committee. So the chair would request a second such recommendation?
Second.
Any discussion?
Question. Earlier today, we heard a little bit about the increase in reliance on French and Creole. And Brainfuse does a great job, as we discussed in our Finance Committee. What are the possibilities of French and Creole tutoring services? Got any ideas there?
My goodness. We have actually 20-plus languages spoken in our community. And finding tutoring services for all those languages is probably a big ask. Having said that, they do have staff that are English-language learning specialists that work with students who are learning English in any language. So the added bilingual support for Spanish speakers is great because that's the biggest, non-English speakers in our community. But there is support for all of those other languages as well.
If you could look into some additional support there. You're right, there's so many languages. The increasing diversity is wonderful. How do we really respond to those who are?
Right, and that might fall into the community partnership aspect of that strategic plan element and the great work that John and Sakura are doing and working with those organizations. But I will look into it further.
I got to bring my microphone closer.
Okay.
This is great. Like I said, this has gotten due pass. We already have a second.
Yep. Any other questions, discussion?
Any.
Yeah, it's great. All right, hearing none, let's have a call of the roll.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Ms. Witter.
Approved.
And Ms. Peterman.
Approved. The motion's carried.
Thank you. Thank you, Deb.
Resolution 43-2025, I'd like to call up Mary Barr.
Hello. Good evening, President Peterman, the Board of Trustees, CEO Hill. My name's Mary Barr, and I'm here to present a resolution regarding the renewal of a software license that supports an essential aspect of the Indianapolis Public Library's website. It's the calendar of events. The license is for a company called Communico. This proposal has received positive approval from the Finance Committee as well as support from my colleagues in IT and Finance Department. The Communico contract has been reviewed and approved by our attorneys. As outlined in the draft resolution and materials that have been supplied to you, Communico currently powers three components of our patron experience that we're recommending renewing. The first component is called Communico Attend. This is our online calendar and program management system. Patrons use it to view our online calendar and register for events like storytimes, lectures, concerts, and computer classes. The second module is Communico Reserve. This feature allows patrons to book study rooms at our branches. And the third component is Communico Core, which is the platform proprietary backend and analytics. Bottom line, Communico enables thousands of program signups each year, supporting learning, belonging, and well-being across our community. The totals from these patron self-serve registrations help inform future programming decisions as well as key metrics that we provide you, the board, throughout the year. Before I walk through the details, it's significant for me to point out that by the year-end, our innovation and technology team will present to the Finance Committee a comprehensive proposal for a one-vendor enterprise software solution that will support and streamline our entire web presence. The enterprise software solution will outline a three-year phased roadmap to transition our many web tools into a single unified platform, this calendar function included. My role today is not to go into the details of the enterprise solution, but rather lay the groundwork and begin a transition strategy as we begin, as we continue popular web features. That's why we're recommending a two-year extension for Communico. Why two years is that it strikes a nice balance between financial stewardship as well as a seamless, uninterrupted patron experience of our website. So to recap, the Indianapolis Public Library's digital experience is currently supported by a multiple of independent software tools, search, the calendar, blogs, forums, email marketing, and more. These separate digital tools have served us, but it's time to look forward to a more strategic, efficient solution. In the interim, extending Communico for two years allows us to continue to deliver the calendar and reservations. So for the investment, for a two-year agreement, the Communico license has an annual cost of $53,232 for a total amount of $106,464 over the two-year term. This will be funded from operating fund 101 within the marketing and communications budget. So the fiscal impact will be $53,232 a year for the next two years. Our last contract with Communico was $40,000 a year. I have documentation from Communico that explains the price increase from $40,000 a year to $53,000 a year. To summarize, this 32.5% increase is due to, number one, keeping To summarize, this thirty-two-point-five percent increase is due to, number one, keeping pace with costs, the rising housing and staffing due to inflation, according to Communico; two, adding upgrades based on patron feedback, which improves usability; three, adding American Disability ADA specialists to meet federal compliance standards that all library websites must meet by twenty, by April twenty twenty-six; and four, Communico tells us that their pricing formula is based on library service population areas to, to ensure consistency and fairness across all their clients. So any financial flexibility is in the form of a one, two, or three-year contract. So opting for the two-year contract meshes with our transition to an enterprise solution, which, once implemented, will offer some further efficiencies. So given the, the investment implications, our planned website roadmap in, in alignment with our IT colleagues, I respectfully request for the board to support this resolution, a two-year contract with Communico to provide online calendar, event, and reservation and study room services. With that, I thank the board, and we'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mary. At the Finance Committee gave, you and your team gave a really good explanation. Also, the idea of the two years, why that two-year explanation for the increase in cost from twenty twenty-two. So this received a due pass.
Excellent. So Resolution forty-three twenty twenty-five regarding the approval of Communico LLC's Communico Core Attend and Reserve Software License, Software License Renewal for the period of, this is a long one, geez, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to August thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, received a positive recommendation from the Finance Committee, so the Chair would request a second to such recommendation?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll have a call of the roll.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Plasio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Ms. Witter.
Approved.
And Ms. Biederman.
Approved. The motion's carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. And thank you for also giving us the heads-up about the enterprise approach.
Our next, um, uh, resolution is forty-four dash twenty twenty-five. This is our last resolution, and this is our final resolution for our bond twenty, twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six for the multi-facility long-term capital maintenance and equipment update project and expenses. This is the final bond, I mean, final resolution for the sale of the bonds, and this, um, this is on page forty-eight of the Electronic Board documentation, and this is for the principal amount of fifteen million, not to exceed eighteen million, that's principal plus interest. And the remaining of the documents go into how the accounting should reflect in any tax matters and any other information like that, if you'd like to read that twenty-page So this is standard. It did receive a due pass, and we just need the final approval.
The Finance Committee reviewed it, looked at the documents, and we offer a due pass.
Excellent. It's a, that one was a bit of a snoozer there.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so Resolution forty-four dash twenty twenty-five regarding authorizing issuance of bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six multi-facility long-term capital maintenance and equipment update project and expenses related thereto, received a positive recommendation from the Finance Committee, so the Chair would request a second to such recommendation?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll have a call of the roll.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Plasio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Ms. Witter.
Approved.
And Ms. Biederman.
Approved. The motion's carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So the final slide is this update. Just want to go over some dates, so you just have these in mind. As stated on this final resolution for the bond, this was approved on September twenty twenty-second by the City County Council, and then we have the, October the first, we have the Munich Corp reviewed our twenty twenty-six bond and received a pass, and then the City County Council adopted the budget on October the sixth. We do have a Moody's rating coming up this Thursday. This is a typical process for selling of the bonds, so it is scheduled for this Thursday, I believe it is. And then we also have an event on November the thirteenth, NDPL Vendor Outreach and Networking Event, and it would be at the Central Library from one to three PM. So I invite everyone who can come and attend. And that's it for the Finance Committee. Thank you.
Dr. Matata, does that conclude the Finance Committee?
That concludes the Finance Committee's report. Thank you, Lolita. Thank you, Mary. And for those who presented resolutions, very much appreciated.
Yes, thank you, and thank you. Now, let's move on to the Diversity Policy and Human Resources Committee. Dr. Plasio.
Thank you. So we have one resolution, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. So I'll pass it to Tisha.
All right. So I'm here to present the Resolution forty-five dash twenty twenty-five. This comes out of the state bill that requires all employers to give one time to parents to attend attendance meeting for the school or conference meetings for the school. However, as the library decided to categorize this as a pay time for staff so they don't have to take it on pay, the bill clarified that we, as employers, don't have to pay it, but we decided to create a policy that allowed us to pay for that time that the parents attend the attendance meeting or the conference meeting. So we reviewed it in the committee, and we have very long discussions about it, and everybody agreed that this was to move forward for the board.
That's recommendation from the committee.
All right, so Resolution forty-five dash twenty twenty-five regarding the approval of Policy Two Forty, time to attend school meetings, received a positive recommendation from the Diversity Policy and Human Resources Committee, so the Chair would request a second to such a recommendation?
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you. Just want to say thank you for paying the employees for that day, even though it's not required, so it's one extra step getting closer to the equity that we all talk about.
Excellent. Any other discussion? Okay. Yeah, second that, very good. Awesome. Okay, let's have a call of the roll.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Plasio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Ms. Witter.
Approved.
And Ms. Biederman.
Approved. The motion is carried.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Dr. Plasio, does that conclude the DPHR Committee report for today?
That does conclude the, the report for today.
Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to the Facilities Committee. Dr. Riolo.
The committee has two resolutions tonight, and I will ask Adam to come up, and they're the best, to present those for us, please.
Excellent. Welcome.
Thank you.
We've got lots of questions for you. I've got lots of answers. Never mind. All right, first resolution is approval of First Addendum to Janitorial Services Contract with Camacho Facilities Services. So the board approved Resolution seventy-six dash twenty twenty-two, award a janitorial services contract to Camacho in late twenty-two to start in early twenty-three. The current contract runs through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, so that will expire in the next few months. Camacho and NDPL are agreeable to a one-year extension, and that extension will extend through the end of January twenty twenty-seven. Camacho has offered a zero percent price increase, so they will keep their prices the same as the prior three years. The average annual cost is approximately one-point-six-two million, and this will be funded via the Operating Fund that is Fund One-O-One, and this has been submitted as part of our twenty twenty-six budget. Camacho, vendor, Camacho is based in Indianapolis. They are a city-certified MBE and will self-perform up to one-hundred percent of the work. They have used subcontractors to allow for expanded capacity, who also fit the other three categories of our XBE program, and they have successfully contributed towards our four individual XBE goals. Oh, that's the last slide for this resolution.
Out of committee, to recommend to the whole board.
Excellent. So Resolution forty-six twenty twenty-five regarding the approval of the First Amendment to Janitorial Services Contract with Camacho Facilities Services, received a positive recommendation from the Facilities Committee, so the Chair would request a second to such recommendation?
Second.
Any discussion?
So this, this is wonderful, there's no increase.
We're very happy.
I'm happy about that.
Yes.
But we also hear from other vendors having increases. So I'm thinking, whatever you guys are doing is great when you have zero increases, but what else can we do in general? It's just a comment, in general, to keep it coming in that way, where there's little to no increase, if possible, in extensions. And that, how does that compare to how much we're increasing the, our own workers and team? How does that fare as we're providing increases to vendors versus our own people?
Mm-hmm.
No, no, no response.
Okay, all right. I started, and then I wanted to double-check.
Yeah.
Any?
For sharing.
Sorry. No, no problem. Any other comments? All right, hearing none, we'll have a call of the roll.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Plasio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Ms. Witter.
Approved.
And Ms. Biederman.
Approved. The motion's carried. There we go. Oh, man. Thank you. The next resolution is approval to award a construction services contract for the Fort Ben Branch Acoustic Performance Improvement Project. You may remember this as being discussed early this year or late last year. So this is the first part of an overall larger suggested performance improvement project. Then I'll go through the background just as a refresher. So Fort Ben Branch was successfully designed and constructed to much fanfare, and patrons and staff are very happy with the branch. However, we have found that the acoustics are suboptimal, and we are looking to increase the overall acoustic performance of that building. Our suggestion is to install acoustic panels, which will absorb and refract the sound that is traveling to reduce the distance traveled and the total volume that is traveling. So we sent this project directly to twelve vendors, half of whom were XBE vendors, and we posted this invitation to quote on the NDPL website, and, you know, there's also word-of-mouth marketing as well. So that we do use the invitation-to-quote process, we received three quotes. The lowest responsive and responsible bidder shall be awarded, and that was Gillette General Contractors, Inc. So the awarded cost of one-hundred-ninety-eight thousand dollars is above the estimate of one-hundred-twenty thousand dollars. Fortunately, there were funds in a different bond fund, Fund Four Eighty-Five, that were due to lower-than-expected costs across multiple projects, and we are able to fund this project using Bond Fund Four Eighty-Five. The vendor is based in Indianapolis, Indiana. They are not a city-certified XBE, and they will self-perform one-hundred percent of the work.
This resolution received a full pass out of committee, to recommend to the whole board.
All right, great. Resolution forty-seven dash twenty twenty-five regarding approval to award a construction services contract for the Fort Ben Acoustic Remediation Project, received a positive recommendation from the Facilities Committee, so the Chair would request a second to such a recommendation?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
I had one point.
Yep.
I found it to be problematic that with a brand-new building, we would have this problem with acoustics when it was reviewed, the design, the layout, everything went through major discussions, approval processes, architectural design, et cetera. To now have, within a matter of a couple of years of its opening, to have to pay another one-hundred-ninety-eight thousand dollars, I just find it to be deplorable. I think it's, it's not an indication of the kind of care that Adam has done a great job with, making sure that our facilities are developed faultfully and carefully, and so there's no fault of his. I think it is a problem with the fact that we had this process, and we've gone through the type of care that you've attended to so carefully. But then to have to pay one-hundred-ninety-eight thousand dollars for acoustics when we were intentional about making sure that this particular branch would have the kind of facility that met the needs of the community in every way, and then to have to do this is just, I find it very troubling. Again, it's no fault of yours. You took it through the right channels, through the right processes, through everything, but this is just, it's problematic.
So on that, did we hear you correctly that this is like a phase of it, and there's more to come? Or? This is the first of two solutions that were available to us, that were proposed. The, this is installing acoustic panels on the ceiling of the north entryway, and then on the north wall of the main branch area. So the full, the, the second option would be to build walls around the active children's area, which is eighty-some percent of the source of the sound. And so that was the, the combined proposal, or the combined solution was what was proposed several months ago, and we decided to move forward with just the acoustic panels. They will reduce the sound, you know, both the distance traveled and the overall volume, but the, the walls are not included in this one. Having two small children, I understand how the volume could increase by eighty percent when children are there. Great. And part, part of this had to do with a space requirement. In order to be on the fort, we had to present as a two-story front? Yes. Yeah. So I don't want to answer a question that hasn't been asked, but it seems like there is some question as to the history of the design and why this. Okay, all right. We don't, we don't have time for that. All right. Yeah, please.
Was, was the decibels specked out in the design?
Yes. And I, I forget, it wasn't the decibels, it, it, that was one of the units in the measurement, and I forget the measurement, and I apologize. I, I wrote a one-or-two pager that reviewed the acoustic design requirements. We set forth those requirements. The design firm designed a building to meet those requirements. The construction firm built the building according to those specifications, and follow-up acoustic testing was near the upper end of those specs, but still within our initial required acoustic specifications. Excuse me. Unfortunately, due to the, the two-story presentation, it's basically a basketball court in design, and sound travels very easily, and so it's not so much the volume, but the distance that the sound is traveling. You can hear the children's section on the east end all the way, very clearly on the west end, and so.
What, what I'm wondering is if the, either, either company kind of caught cost somewhere, because we clearly have a solution, and, and if, if the testing came up in the higher end, maybe they were aiming for the higher end to cut cost. So I, I'm not saying that we have the solution here, but I'm just saying, maybe in the next iteration, we may have to lower that spec a bit.
Yeah, and that's one of the lessons that we're looking at, is was our initial spec too high, and that's very possible. So we can work on that in the next iteration of, you know, construction design. Any other questions?
So how much do, are we anticipating for the next iteration of the construction design?
So we're doing the acoustic panels first. The estimate for including walls for the active children's area The estimate for including walls for the active children's area was approximately, excuse me, $300,000. We are looking for this solution to address the acoustic concerns, so we can avoid that. If the acoustic panels don't perform as to where we are aiming, then we can, I hate to use colloquialism, but cross that bridge when we get to it. But we do not plan on creating walls or building new walls around the active children's area at this time.
All right. Any other?
Nope.
Nope. All right. Let's have a call of the roll.
Dr. Matata.
I'm staying.
I'm sorry.
I'm staying.
I'm staying, thank you. Dr. Ponceo.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
I'm staying.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Ms. Woodard.
Approved.
And Mr. Beederman.
Approved.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, approved.
Oh, okay, okay.
Do we, we're four? All right. Motion is carried. Thank you. Thank you. Does that conclude the...
That does conclude our report.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Great discussion as well. Thank you all. All right, moving on to the Library Foundation update.
Yes. Our President of the Foundation, Roberta Jaggers, will attend our meeting in November. So she asked that anyone contact her in advance if you request that she address any certain topics. So she'll be here next time. We had 87 donor gifts this past month, and that included Arthur Jordan Foundation, who was our top institutional donor. And the foundation provided more than $102,000 to Library to fund different programs, including Fall Festival Slammin' Rhymes that will be at Central, 12 to 4, November 15th. Be there or B Square.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to the report of the CEO.
All right, thank you. Good evening, President Beederman, Board of Trustees. The first thing I have for you is the confirmatory Resolution 48-2025 that is related to finance, travel, and personnel matters that occurs between each board member. It's in its typical format, and I would ask for your approval.
Approved Resolution 48-2025 regarding finances, personnel, and travel.
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a call of the roll.
And Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Ponceo.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Ms. Woodard.
Approved.
And Mr. Beederman.
Approved. The motion is carried.
Okay, moving on. So my presentation for October 27th is highlights activities for the month of September. Your full report covers additional operational reports. Just a quick agenda overview, if you see in front of you, monthly impact, program review, social work, shared system, staff recognition, upcoming events, and Ms. Mary Ann McKenzie will give a quarter-three statistical report. The first thing, a typical day at NDPL, physical circulation, it was 14,132. We had 143 new cardholders, 7,424 visitors. Our programs were about 32, and attendance was 516. To add just a little bit of context, our circulation to visitor ratio was about 1.9 or 2 checkouts per person. Programs show that we have active engagement with our programs, with about 16 guests in attendance at each program. Also, about 7% of our guests who come through our doors actively participate in a program, 7%. Our host branch, which is Spades Park, they had 18,009 visitors for the month of September, and physical material checkouts was 5,728. And then going back to the physical circulation, again, that's just physical circulation, that doesn't count e-materials. Our top three circulating branches were Glendale, Franklin Road, and Lawrence, and then for visitors was Glendale, Warren, and the Lawrence Branch. Programs across the system, I'll start at the top left, working on my way down, was adults, was 353 programs. Adult programs encompasses adults and seniors, and we had about 3,072 participants. On the youth side, 611 programs, that includes infants, toddlers, preschools, and teens, and we had about 11,987. The top programs for the youth programming was Farm Fund for Toddlers, which was for ages 0 to 5. It was the most popular program in the youth programming. We had 256 participants for that particular program. On the adult side, we had Meet a Pro. This program connects library visitors with working professionals across various in-demand careers. In September, we had 15 guests who attended the first session, which covered IT careers. So good turnout for that. Again, we have various programs throughout the system, just wanted to highlight those two right there. I want to talk about our social work program here. This was not actually in your board packet, but I just want to mention it here real quick. We just want to say thank you to the work for Ms. Jamie Murphy and Ms. Danielle Gerton. They are our social workers. They do a fantastic job, and I just want to show a quick video here of a testimonial.
At the Indianapolis Public Library, we believe that strong communities begin with access to information for all. In addition to the free resources that we are known for, books, reference materials, databases, and free classes like computer skills or caregiver support, the library's professional social work team is here to help individuals and families navigate life's challenges and connect them with resources that support well-being. From housing, food support, healthcare, education opportunities, financial or legal help, we're here to listen and respond with resources in our community. Our social workers are at Central Library on Mondays and Wednesdays, and we host local partner organizations on Mondays and Thursdays. We also visit branches across the city every week and join community events. At the Indianapolis Public Library, we champion learning, belonging, and well-being. Our spaces and resources are here for all, and so are the members of our social work team. Let's build a more connected, supported, and thriving Indianapolis together.
Can we give a round of applause for our social work team? All right. All right, just a couple statistical items here real quick. Outreach and partnership meetings, as you see, 2025 had 50 of those. Branch hours, they do one visit per quarter per branch, and year-to-date, there's, they've had 48 visits, and I'm sure our branches appreciate, and the patrons appreciate them making their way to the branches. Bus pass distribution, you see that there. And then community resource tabling, every Monday and Thursday, as you heard in the video, average community agencies at each tabling event is about five agencies. So again, thank you for that. And then interactions with our patrons, they recorded 1,056 referral tracker interactions, and that is for 2025. So a lot of interactions with our patrons that come into the building. So again, thank you to our social work team. The next is the shared system. I spoke earlier about the shared system. Earlier in April, we finally was able to get all 41 managed IPS schools into the shared system. Shared system is going really well right now. We have 86 schools, and I'm going to start on my top left and then work my way around. So eight schools have circulated more than seven books per student. Educator cards, there was 833, and then 69% of those educator cards are active, meaning that they have used their cards within the previous 12 months. Shared system cardholders, we have 48,294, and that's about 2.1 items per cardholder for the month of September. 12,817 NDPL items were checked out at shared system locations, and then finally, 8,431 shared system school items were checked out at NDPL locations. And then congratulations to our new shared systems manager, Ms. Kimberly Anderson. Ms. Kimberly Anderson, she worked alongside Sarah Batt since about 2020, so she brings some experience to the role, and just continue on from where we left off. Staff recognition, last week we had our quarterly star awards, and thank you for those who attended, and I just would like to read off the names here. Page excellence was Rainey Klingensmith from Beach Grove. The other duties assigned is Tammy Edminster from the Central Library. Patron services, Marissa Cohen from the Pike Branch. Team excellence was the Library of Things Committee, most of those you see in that photo. The volunteer partnerships was Laura Edwards from the Indy Library Store, and peer support was Jessica Neave Smith from PDA. And again, can we give them a big round of applause? And then next, we had some retirements. Marina Zimmerman, she retired on September 30th, 2025. As you see, she began her career at NDPL as a volunteer. She also served as a library assistant, too, at the College Branch, and then she finally retired as the manager payroll and talent development. So again, congratulations to Marina and well wishes. Next, we also had Robin Kelly. She retired on October 30th. Robin started her career as in the Business, Science, and Technology Department, and Robin also was a work group supervisor at the Central Library. And Robin actually hired me in my first reference job in, I don't know, 2012, I think it was. So thank you for that. And then Robin ended her career as the manager of adult services at Central Library. So can we give them a round of applause and thank them for their career? And then upcoming events, Staff Day is Monday, November 3rd. All board members are invited. The program starts at 9:00, but breakfast is served from 8:00 to 9:00. Opening remarks will be at 9:00. So we hope to see as many of you there as possible, if not all of you. On Thursday, November 6th, here at the Spades Park Branch, there's a storytelling drawing session in partnership with the Harrison Center. And then last, November 15th, on Saturday, is the Slammin' Rhyme Fall Fest 19. And Slammin' Rhymes is a contest for all poets, rappers, and spoken-word artists in grades 6 through 12. This year's theme is strength, and we have special guests. The success of Doctors Sampson Davis, Ramick Hunt, and George Jenkins began with a childhood promise to become doctors. As youngsters growing up in Newark, New Jersey, they use positive peer pressure to realize their dream, and now through foundation, through their foundation, provide opportunities for young people to participate in impactful activities. And you may know them as the Three Doctors. They will be our special guests. So again, hoping that everyone can turn out and join us for that program. That concludes this portion. Ms. Mary Ann McKenzie will come up and talk about the statistical report for the third quarter, but if you have any questions for me now, I'd be happy to take them. Yes, ma'am.
Just wanted to compliment the growth for, from '24 to '25, from 13 to 50, that's significant growth, commending the staff for that kind of continued outreach. When you have a chance to flesh out a little more information for us, when Dr. Riolo and I go before the IPS Board to talk about our representation, the shared system, any additional information you can give us would be appreciated. Would love that very much, because we like to go back and let them know how great you're doing, how great you and the team is doing.
Yep, thank you.
Ms. Mary Ann McKenzie?
Oh, Mary Ann. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. President, member of the Board of Trustees, I'm so happy to be able to come and talk with you on Gregory Hill's behalf about our quarterly statistical report on library operations. As with prior quarters, you're going to find that in your full packet, you have about 24 slides that do a deep dive into the data. I'm going to give you some highlights, and then I'm going to also point out, unfortunately, I did notice, while I was sitting in my seat, practicing in my head, that there is a minor error on page number 119 of your packet. I erroneously, in my hopeful aspirations of physical circulation increasing, said that we saw a 2% increase in physical circulation. It is a 2% decrease, which I think is something that you all would expect, given our historical conversations around that. So page number 119, I just want to note that correction there. I'm going to give you four slides, just the big highlights, but I'm happy to answer questions on anything you find in your packet. Before I dive into those highlights, I did want to note on page number 127, there is a slide about Wi-Fi usage in the library. We did have a minor outage that impacted the tell end of this quarter and will impact the beginning of the next quarter. That outage is because of a system upgrade. So it's expected, it was known, the state library has a process for us to estimate missing weeks of Wi-Fi utilization, so we're using those estimates during that time period. And then, of course, with the new system, we do anticipate there will be some adjustments as we measure in the new system, and we'll try and figure out the most accurate version of that data. So quarter four reporting on Wi-Fi usage unusually will be quite exciting. Next, on page number 131, we're upgrading the way that we measure service point assistance. I think you all will be very excited to hear that one of the questions that we're asking in the upcoming quarter, this quarter four, is what languages people are encountering at the service points. So we're going to use that data to kind of hone in, to come up with a more nuanced question that we can ask over time to really start to track not only collection usage around languages and usage of language line, but also just the general tools and ways that our staff are working with people across language barriers. So look forward for that in quarter four. Now, this quarter, quarter three, it's the, it's the next-to-last quarter. There's nothing majorly exciting that I can show you. Everything's fine, nothing's amazing. By quarter four, I think I will be able to come back and say things are great. Right now, it's things have the potential to be great. Active cardholders, we are still seeing a trend upwards. We talked last quarter about how, as we transition into the school year, we start to really see the impact of the shared system and all those schoolchildren getting cards, as well as our card campaigns. So we're beginning to see that, we'll continue to see that impact into quarter four and into quarter one of next year. So I am projecting that we will end at a higher active cardholder number than we do, than we had in 2024. If you'd like to see total cardholders, which also includes new cardholders, and inactive cardholders, that is in your print packet. And I will note, the active cardholder visualization, last quarter I didn't include educator cards because those are cards that typically we don't include in the state report, they don't qualify for that. But I went ahead and added them to this visualization moving forward because they're so important to our strategic plan process. So if you notice that these numbers vary slightly from the historical numbers, it's just because we chose to include them in this visualization moving forward. Now, of course, active cardholders become active because they've borrowed something or they engage with something online. Let's take a look at our total circulation, which is both electronic content and physical content. Everything's fine, we're not seeing any great growth. We're seeing that continued shift that I've talked about in previous quarters. Physical circulation's a little bit down, electronic circulation's a little bit up. When you put them together, our total circulation is steady. This is great, we love to see steady, we love even more to see growth, and we are finding it a little bit surprising because we are seeing growth in areas such as branch visits and active cardholders. We would anticipate that we would start to see that impact in our materials and our borrowing. So we're monitoring that closely and then trying to find ways to turn those active cardholders into like power users who borrow lots of books all the time, or all the other materials that we offer in our collection. Another way that you can become an active cardholder, of course, though, is usage of databases. So last quarter I mentioned that the slide was in there, and you were going to see a dip, but not to panic because we always see a dip during the summer months because schools are out and these resources are not being used for research. So this quarter, we start to see the recovery period, this will continue into quarter four and into quarter one, as we really see educators, schoolchildren, college students embracing these resources to learn new skills or do research. We're actually seeing a little bit of a stronger recovery than we did in 2024. I don't have a long-term lens because we changed the way we gather this data at the state library's request, but I did take a peek at how we used to gather it, and we are definitely continuing to see increased growth and usage in this area, which is fantastic. This is one that I will note that I encourage you to look at. Over the next couple of quarters, we know that Inspire databases that we previously received from the state library took a hit because of funding cuts and other reasons. So we have a fantastic digital resource team led by Darlene Fox, and she has done a great job of letting people know... that we previously received in the State Library took a hit because of funding cuts and other reasons. So we have a fantastic digital resource team um led by Darlene Fox, and she has done a great job of letting people know, if you're missing this from Inspire, here's what you can use from what the library pays for. But we will be sort of closely monitoring to see if there's any sort of impact in our usage as a result of the loss of some other resources our patrons could rely on. Lastly, let's move away from collection and active cardholders and just to visits. Our patrons are visiting us, they're visiting us more often than they did in the prior year. So a big portion of last year, we're like, we think we're seeing increased usage, but we transitioned to a new system to count visitors. We are past that transition, and we can definitively say we are seeing increased visitors. Um, for this visualization, I chose to give you a breakdown by branch, so you can kind of see how usage is shifting. Uh, we, of course, want to note that Nora and Pike were closed last year, so you'll see some branches drop, because people are figuring out which branch is most convenient for them to visit. But we are also seeing some really encouraging numbers, such as Central Library usage is up, um, Beach Grove uh is up. So we're just seeing some shifts, and on the whole, everything is more visits. Um, and so we will continue to try and turn those visits into more borrowing and more cardholders. Lastly, I know Gregory spent a lot of time in his report talking about the specifics of programs for the past month, but I'd like to just take a moment to give you a summary over the last quarter. We are offering more programs. So in your packet, if you'd like to see the version of this visualization that shows you attendance, you'll find it looks very similar to this. As we offer more programs, we see more attendees. What we're finding is that offering more programs doesn't bring us more average attendees, but the more programs we offer, the more people are willing to show up. Um, so we're going to continue to sort of, uh, as much as our staff capacity allows, uh, grow those programs, because they are seeing um a continued demand. Those are all my highlights, but I'm happy to take questions on anything I shared or anything in the packet.
I have a question on page one thirty-two about community room use, and I was surprised, twenty-nine percent decrease. And I was wondering if there's a possible hypothesis, and does that affect our budget?
Hmm, that's a hard question to answer on the fly. So community room usage, there are individuals who pay for usage. Um, I would have to ask our events department if they've seen a decrease in revenue. I haven't heard anything um offhand, but I will look into that. Um, a lot of our community room usage comes from nonprofits, who, of course, don't pay us a fee. Uh, we did transition over to a new system to book the community rooms recently, which we are hoping will provide um access to more community groups. It used to be you could book an entire year in advance, and now it, you can book a quarter at a time, just because we had people who would book up for the entire year and then not use it, and someone else was denied access. So it is something we were definitely looking at, to see if that change has um maybe discouraged people from booking, because they couldn't book out the full year. So we'll um, we'll be looking at that closely, and I will um work with Gregory to get you an answer on if we're seeing an impact on revenue.
That's a good point, that was a big difference.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Great.
I'm sorry, did you call him? Okay, um, about the visits, and it was leading actually to the community rooms as well. That's body counts through the door, when you talk about the number of visits?
Yes, so we have, every door has uh basically a camera that looks at the heads coming in. It can tell which direction you're heading. Um, so you should be seeing true um entry and exit into the building. Of course, people can visit multiple times, sometimes multiple times in the same day. We can't exclude those, we're not doing like facial recognition, but in general, it's a good um idea of the body count.
And then when you think about those that are using the community rooms and promoting membership or usage, do you ever target and market those groups that actually use the community room, or no, no plans for that just yet?
Um, in terms of marketing, specifically about the library, you mean?
Library or just library cards or other programs that may be offered?
Sure. Um, when the community room usage is through a true partnership with the library, one of the things we always do is promote our collection and our resources. If it's someone who's rented the space on their own, um, it's their navigation through the general branch that would expose them to information about the library, but we don't necessarily target ex- like specifically to people using our space. Yeah. Yeah.
I'm just curious how you engage with the.
Absolutely, yeah.
It's the community coming in, so that was probably more the.
Yeah, and and as you'll see, there's a lot of this usage that are by community groups, and many of the community groups who use our space are also partners in other ways with the library. So we are always looking for ways to bring ourselves into the conversation, encourage people to know more about what we offer.
Discussion points. All right, well, thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, well, we're almost there. We're so close. All right. Excellent, all right, now we move, no unfinished business, no new business? And now, this is, this is your moment? All right, this is the, this time is made available for discussion of items not on the agenda, which are of interest to library board members. Opportunities given to suggest items be included on future library board meeting agendas. Do any board members, Dr. Matana, have something to suggest for the November meeting?
First of all, I want to thank Greg and um McKenzie for sharing, but also for those who've shared the amount of information about the partnerships. When we requested that at our last meeting, we didn't realize how great the number of partnerships were and the wide variety of them. I'm concerned about the number of heads that might be coming in for support with our social work, because um large numbers of families are going to be hit if things don't change in our larger federal um situation and and socially now as well. Uh, could you, in our next meeting, give us a sense of heads coming in for social work support? Um, and if there are any new things that we need to consider or um avenues and other partnerships, just like Deb had said, you know, do we need to tap into some other partnerships? What else do we need to do in order to be better supportive as partners to social organization?
I was saying, oh, fair, a couple weeks ago, and there were some really strong partnerships in that room. I was really excited about that.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we need.
All right, any, any other future agenda items? Okay, uh, the next regular board meeting is Monday, November twenty-fourth, twenty-two-five, at the Irvington Branch Library, uh, Levin South, uh, all. Autobahn, there you go, thank you very much. Uh, at uh six-thirty PM, uh, the meeting's adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.